And we are live, just waiting for our room to populate.
Welcome to the planning board meeting of January 5, 2022. I'll begin with a roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
That's the Leo.
Here.
Bob Calp.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Don Walters is absent and I am Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker, Andy Port, Director of Planning, and Jennifer Blancher will be joining us as well from zoning administration. So, the agenda for tonight, we have a continued hearing for Turnpike redevelopment at 166, 168 Route 1 for Smart Growth Plan approval. In our other business, we have approval not required for 14 Pine Street. There will be a discussion among planning board members for zoning regarding short-term rental units. We have approval of three sets of minutes from previous meetings. And as we always do in our first meeting in January, annual election of officers, and then any other updates from the chair or the planning director. So at this time, we'll move right to the public hearing with Turnpike redevelopment. And Andy, could you identify the first speaker, please?
Sure. So, from the team here, we have Scott Cameron, we have Bob Uleg, Karen Palastino, and Lou Minakuchi from Minko, the company proposing the development. Joe is the architect. And they can, I should also note, Scott Thornton is here from VAI, who did the traffic analysis.
All right, team. Who would like to kick off your presentation for tonight that will focus on the outstanding issues yet be fully agreed?
Joe, if you were announcing an introduction, you're maybe silent or muted.
Okay. Hello, Andy. Thank you for the introduction. I think we're gonna just start it off with Scott Cameron to talk about some of the civil issues that were kind of left outstanding from our last presentation. So Scott, if you're on, please take it away.
Yep, I'm here. Sorry, I've been talking myself on mute for the last few minutes. Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, my recommend name is Scott Cameron with the Moore and Camera Group, address at 66 Elm Street in Davis, Massachusetts. And yep, we are here, Andy, thank for announcing the team. We are here on behalf of the applicant, which is Turnpike Redevelopment LLC and Haley's Redevelopment LLC, which are also the ownership entities of 166, 168 Route 1. Our hope tonight was to go through the civil engineering and transportation-related comments and concerns. This is kind of the technical presentation. I'm not going to get too much into the nitty-gritty, but I wanted to go through and highlight some of the, I think, substantial improvements we made to design the project based on the collective feedback we've been receiving from all areas. So Andy, if you could maybe flip through to slide two, or that works too. I just want, I'm gonna highlight some of the things. So we did make adjustments to the plans in accordance with the peer review comments. So you'll see inserts on the plans. So if you're familiar, there's a match line. So you will see the entirety of the property, although we can't fit it all on some of the sheets at the desirable scale. So you'll see that as we go through. If you slip up to the next, a road control plan, I just wanted to note that Mr. Christensen had asked us to add some erosion controls along Route 1, which we happily did. And we did adjust the road controls to fit the limited work. And I'll get into that a little bit, a little bit later. But you'll see it does go into the CCRT where we are posting the multi-sock and limited work. And this will play into how we've kind of adapted the plans to be more harmonious with the rail trail, work better with it. Next slide. So I think maybe what I'll do is I'll walk around, maybe starting at Parker Street. And if maybe you can zoom in a little bit, and we'll just walk through the site a little bit, and I'll touch upon some of the changes. So at our last meeting, Joe had hit on some of these. But we did adjust the configuration, the parking. Coming in from Parker Street, you'll see now there's five spaces right at the front, where we had four previously. We also adjusted the connection to go directly from the parking to the CCRT instead of kind of bringing people down a Parker Street where there, there's no sidewalk now. So this is more of a direct route. As you come into the site, the parking spaces, we did add in landscape islands. You'll see on the right past the first row of parking on the right, there's a solid waste enclosure for recycling and solid waste. And this was relocated on the opposite side of the property, had previously been on the rail trail side. So we felt this was a little better location where we could fully enclose it, be accessible from the truck and keep it away from really the main route to the rail trail. That was a focus of the redesign. Another bank of parking spaces, we did pull one back. So we had more space there initially. We moved them. We made some compact to get more and open up that throat as you come into the turnaround. And that's where you're gonna see the walkway, eight-foot sidewalk, which would be your, your primary route connecting from the Hill Street intersection crosswalk, lighted crosswalk out to the rail trail. It's eight feet directly along that southern property line. And we did curve it around south of the turnaround. This is a dedicated route, and that's eight foot wide throughout with handicap access ramps, detectable pads. And then when you get into the turnaround, we did make some fairly significant adjustments in here. We increased the diameter of the turnaround from 70 feet to 80 feet to make it more accessible for a fire truck. The prior design was more elliptical. We were really kind of pushing the limits of the turning movement of the truck. This will be much more comfortable. We adjusted the handicap parking, did add back a parking space there, which will, you know, it'll be, it'll be a visitor space or residence space, but probably your primary live workspace if somebody chooses to use that there. But it's right in front of the building. And we have a more accessible and user-friendly drop-off area right near the front door, 10 by 30, right in front of the building. Joe went over the building footprint adjustments last time, so I won't get into that too much, other than to remind you that we did on the ramp down to the building, we did move that off of the primary building facade. So it's kind of perpendicular and off to the side now and fully enclosed. So that the roof covering of that actually will be a green roof. So that will be vegetated and planted. So looking down from above, it will look green. Of course, standing in the cul-de-sac, you will see the garage door there and the access down to the parking below. I guess we can continue along the rail trail side up into the northerly parking area. You will see, we did make some adjustments to the northerly parking area. We added in parking spaces for the commercial unit. So there's retail parking directly in front of what is the now detached standalone commercial space. We did adjust the parking. We eliminated one landscape out of the parking spaces here, but kept the same number. This was part of our work towards making the entry into this northerly area. There was some concern raised in the last meeting about the proximity of cars turning into a car backing out. Scott Thornton will show you a sneak preview of what he has been working on with NAST DOT to further improve that access with, with more of a turnoff. It's not reflected here yet. This is just stuff that's been brewing in the past few days with, with his team in NAST DOT Communications. So you also see we are protecting many more trees, mature trees have all been located by field survey. We've eliminated all of the retaining walls along this boundary. We'll see that stand out more on the grading plan in the next sheet. There's a couple of tree wells just to protect the critical root zones for the existing trees. They are smaller in size, eight, 10 inches, which usually they're, they're a little bit better. You know, you can work around versus the bigger, more mature trees, which you got to be really careful working around those root zones. And we're well off of the big mature oak, which is that 28-inch one you'll see to the north, kind of around the matchline sheet. That was a real feature tree that we pulled a lot of the work well away from that area. Heading back down south along Route 1, you'll notice the walkway, continuous walkway. There's a six-foot tree belt followed by a six-foot sidewalk. I say tree belt loosely because this will really just be a grass belt with the overhead wires in the state requirements. We're probably not going to be permitted to put trees in there. Right now, we're just showing grass there. So we'll clarify that when you see the final complete plan set. We did accommodate here. Now, this is interesting. If you recall, the prior design, we actually had a full lane and narrow lane running along Route 1. It was to accommodate a drop-off in front of the building, get to some additional parking in the south end. We've taken all that out. But we still want to consider emergency access to get to the side of the building and have the ability of a truck to pull off of the highway instead of blocking it. So what you'll see, you'll see it says 20-foot-wide emergency apparatus pull off. And what that's going to be is we're going to transition from your six-inch curb, vertical granite curb down to a three-inch vertical granite curb that can be mounted by the truck. As they pull into the shoulder, both the grass strip, the sidewalk, and then the planting behind will be free and clear and structurally reinforced with either a thickened concrete slab for the sidewalk or structural subbase underneath the loam and seed so that a fire truck can pull up on that area and stage and have an area to stage in front of the building. So we did add that in. But for normal operators, people using the road, you're really not going to see what that is. You won't be able to tell the difference. So this is really an emergency feature we added in to provide access on that side. Then finally, in the southern end of the building, we eliminated that parking and now it's a new kind of open space park area, which we covered in the last meeting. I do want to note from a parking ratio, we put forth a full court press on making the surface parking as minimal as possible. So we did reduce the paved surface area by about 30% from our original design, going from roughly 38,000 square feet to roughly 27,000 square feet. We did reduce parking spaces. We are down to 128 total. Forty-five of those are surface and 83 are below the building. And we also took advantage of the compact space provisions. So close to 75% of the surface parking spaces are compact. However, most of the parking spaces in the garage are standard size. So our total compact parking for the property is still only at 30%, meaning the district requirements under the zoning ordinance. So we've got about a 70/30 split from regular-sized spaces to compact spaces. But this helps us reduce that, that previous footprint. We focus more on the depth of the spaces. They're eight and a half by 16. So the shallower depth will make cars park more efficiently. People tend to pull in where they think the back of their car is not in the aisle. So it makes people pull all the way forward rather than wasting all that space in a conventional 18 or 19-foot-long parking space. So we think these are really good improvements. Getting into a little bit more of the grading and drainage on the next plan, Andy, the we had some conversations with John Eric White at Engineering. Obviously, Phil Christensen, who did the peer review. And one of the, one of the big takeaways is we were really getting into this. You know, we had that, the retaining wall along most of the CCRT boundary because we're dealing with a lot of grade challenges. We had to, we're fixed on Route 1, we're fixed on Parker Street, we're fixing the budding lot line. We're trying to preserve trees, trying to make all these accommodations, and it boiled down to having a wall. And we were looking at ways to get rid of that. So what we ended up doing, and again, collaborating with engineering, maybe you can zoom in, Andy, so you can see a little more clear. But right now, there's, there's a ditch, and this is the old railway ditch that would have been built back when the rail was in use. Water would just shut off, get into the ditch. If you've seen it, if you had a chance to go out there, it is kind of, it's been, hasn't really been maintained much, as is typical. So this kind of mucky pockets, it's kind of, you know, you know, it's, it's not very clean or appealing to look at or be around. So we engineered this in a manner to, to preserve drainage. So in areas where we still have some of the existing natural low spots, we're going to incorporate area drains and then perforated pipe that's going to be buried in place of the swale. So basically, water will still be able to get into this and will still put the water back into the sandy soil beneath. But now we're able to fill this in and make a smoother, cleaner transition between the paved surface of the rail trail to the building itself. So no more walls, no more culverts you have to walk over. A softer grade and really a nice wide open boulevard, especially in this area you're looking at right now between the building, 80 to 100 foot of open area that will be landscape grass. I can envision people with, you know, blankets out here, picnicking or enjoying that open space area. It's, it's big, it's nice, and we don't have that ditch in between the properties, which is kind of bifurcating the two, making it difficult to, to kind of blend together. So this falls down. We are maintaining the alchemical garden area. So we're not changing the grades in there. We did add an area drain to make sure we don't have any water issues in there. Again, we have a sandy soil. We really don't expect you're going to see any water running off in this area. But we're doing our due diligence in engineering to make sure that we have those sales saves in there. And then as it continued down, it will kind of restore back to a very subtle swales, be closer down to Parker Street. Again, this area, we are flattening it out, softening it, cleaning it, and landscaping it. So we're trying to, we're trying to accommodate some of the trees in this area. We didn't want to get into filling. There's really no way to do that and protect the trees. So that was some of the considerations down that area. But all in all, we feel, you know, we've done a really good job of blending these two together. So you have a really harmonious project, public amenities space, rail trail. We have all the public cross connections and sidewalks and walkability features of this project. We did go through all of Phil Christensen's comments. A lot of them retained the drainage. Some of the adjustments we did make was we did add a small infiltration system below the cul-de-sac. You can see some squares right there to address one of his comments. We did kind of revamp and overhaul all the calculations to meet the new paved surface reductions that we accommodated in this new design, the new, new grading drainage. And so everything was updated, reconciled. I did provide that response letter to you. If there are any particular questions about our responses and what those comments were, I'm happy to answer those. I think it would be a better use for our time to move, move along here. And then going back, this is the utility plan. Again, this is very technical in nature. I don't think we need to go into that too much. I didn't include in the presentation just the watershed plans. You can see, Phil had us do a little bit more of a micro look at this than the original design. So we worked through all that. He's good with everything, as you saw in his, his final letter that he issued yesterday. So this is just the watershed plans, which we tried to break out by color coding. So you can kind of see how we look at the different surfaces. We added in some representative samples. You have, you had this plan in the last submission. I just included it here again, as we do reference. Phil Christensen had mentioned, had a couple of comments pertaining to some of the materials and features that we were adding on the project. So those are all here. And we have the garage plan. Again, if you have any questions about that, how we broke out the parking in the first floor plans, you can see that as well. And I think at this time, I want to pass the baton maybe over to Scott Thornton, who will talk to you a little bit about his work on the transportation study in NAST DOT Communications.
Excuse me, Scott Cameron. Could we take questions from the board on what you've presented and then freshen our minds? So I don't know if there are any comments or questions, but on what Scott's just presented or anything you've read in the reports, would someone have anything they want to say at this point? Rick?
Yes. I had a question, going back to the north parking lot. If we go back to that picture, please. And when you were looking at the tree well, I just had a question about that. You've got a 14-inch tree that is outside the tree well. I was wondering what, what that is, what the thought is there?
Because you were mentioning- There's, there's no grading changes there. So in that area, we're actually coming down and blending pretty darn close to the existing grade. It's not much of a swell. It's kind of, that tree's right at the high point. There's a better way.
So it looks, it looks like that wall just kind of aims at the tree trunk, but that's, that's far enough away to protect it?
Yeah. So keep in mind too, when these are actually built, we, we would have, we will have a full construction plus set of plans that follow this with a much deeper dive on how that's going to be built. These aren't massive. The idea here would be that we're working this and blending it down so that it tapers down to nothing in that area. And I could see where we could adjust that and maybe sweep it a little further away from that trunk. You know, the, the important thing here is we're identifying, we do want to protect those trees and create those walls around them. And there'll be a fieldstone type, it's going to kind of look like a fieldstone application for these.
Yep. The other question that I had, and maybe Scott Thornton is going to address this, is the, what the current thought is for the connection between the, the property and the intersection of Route 1 and Hill Street. I couldn't what the width of that sidewalk was meant to be.
Yep, I can cover that. So the short answer is, right now, we don't have anything in writing from Ashby Cross, Bradford Real Estate Holdings. Mr. Minakuchi has actually met with the owner, spoken on the phone and met with him. He's very open to allowing us to, allowing the applicant, rather, to extend that sidewalk across his property. You can see, we did actually go out and survey the property. And you can see the existing concrete landing, the sidewalk to nowhere that the ramp goes to, and that it's actually already encroaching on the property a little bit. We don't have anything in writing yet. So I was disinclined to show anything on plan because I don't have owner permission to do that. But I can say he was very open to the idea. I have high confidence that we'll get it done. And I think that it's in, the applicant's motivated to, to see that happen. But our intention would be to continue the six-foot-wide walk in grass belt along Route 1 to intersect with that existing crosswalk landing area. So you have that full connection.
Great, thanks. And the only other question I had was back going down to the corner of the driveway at Parker Street. The, as I understand it, you're eliminating the sway altogether in that area. So the, the fact that the driveway exit comes very close to the culvert isn't going to be an issue.
Yeah, the culvert's actually a little off of that. And no, it's, this is going to be a much better situation. If you did see that culvert, you can see the debris and everything that's in there. I have seen it when it blocks in heavy rainfall. By getting all this underground enclosed structures, it's going to be far easier to maintain and keep that open and clear so that you don't have limbs falling in and organics. And I think I saw there was a cart or something there at one point a few years ago that had blocked it up that we pulled out of there. So that's, and everything's H20 capable. So where, where some of the structures might go underneath the pavement, there's no issues with that either. And this is similar to what we did as part of One Boston Way, which is already built. We reconstr- reconstructed that entire drainage quarter. It was all buried. We actually found the outlet to that drainage system. This whole system, we found it buried under about 18 inches of frag-mitey common reed roots and just years of organic buildup. So that's all been rebuilt and reconstructed. So, and working very well.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board want to comment? And Rick, you can lower your hand. Thanks. Just to keep us clean. I think I just see another one go up. Yes, Bob.
Done muting. Thanks. Just, just quickly, wondering if you could summarize one more time, just the, the parking numbers. The way I understand it, the, the parking that is shown both at grade and below grade is what is required to satisfy the, the market requirements for residential as, as defined at our last meeting. So I just wondered if, if there has been any change to that at all. And if all of these spaces are really dedicated to residential and focused on the market requirements for residential, are there specific accommodations related to, to the retail, to, you know, potential use of spaces otherwise during the day for other uses? And also from a, related to parking, from a pedestrian point of view, if you could just sort of walk us through how if I parked my car in, in some of the more remote locations, how as a pedestrian I get to the building? You know, if there's sidewalk provided, et cetera.
Sure. So I'll start with the, the second question regarding the sidewalks. So right now, the, if you do park in either the Parker Street or the northerly lot, which would be numbered and assigned to the tenants, you would walk just up the aisle. You'd have, it's not, it's a long distance. And it's not a, it's not a, neither one is really a throughway. So there's not a tremendous amount of traffic. And with the lighting, everything, there's, there's no issues with that. The, with regards to the ratios, we had already gone through and reduced the parking ratios down to actually a little bit below what would be desirable, about one and a half spaces per unit. We're currently sitting at 1.39. And I'll go through the numbers with you. This is consistent with both Three Boston Way and One Boston Way. And kind of the basement of where we can be with the parking on this. The ratios work out to, so the requirement for 92 units in the, in the bedroom breakdown is 107 spaces that are required. We're currently providing 128. And if you go to the garage plan, which is a few slides down, yeah. So you can see there too, of that 128, again, trying to make this as efficient as possible. There's a series of spaces that are blocked in. There are 16 of those that are double stacked. And those would go to tenants that, that did have a need for, for two spaces, which, which again, they're seeing at the other facility. And if you take out those 16, we're really only at about 112 fully accessible spaces, which is only five more than the minimum required. So I, I do feel pretty comfortable that, you know, especially, you know, with the efforts we've put forth in making compact spaces and getting them underground where we can be more aggressive with the configurations that we're, we're really at the, the bottom of where we can be with the parking.
I, I think, I think you've met the residential numbers. I guess, I guess fundamentally, fundamentally, my question is if it's really all dedicated to residential because it, it needs to be from a market standpoint, and you've satisfied that. How, how is the flexibility built into the plan to allow for other users during the day?
Yeah. So the, the number, you know, so the surface parking, first off, will be assigned one, to make sure people are, they know where they got to go at night to park. So we still do have two parking areas. So if you are in that northerly area, which will probably be the least desirable and the last to get, get reserved, you're going to know to go there. Typically, the people parking on the surface, they're also exiting and going to work during the day. Those spaces open up. We do have the four spaces dedicated for the retail, which for the, it's roughly 800 square foot space. We feel it's more than adequate for that size space. And we do have the five spaces closer to Parker Street, which again, those would be opened up to the public during the daytime hours for access to the rail trail. So the good thing about the residential, you know, the, the uses here, they kind of offsets, the residential is overnight and the other uses are mostly during the day. And we feel that it's going to be a, a very manageable sharing of those spaces. So they're, you know, ultimately, we're looking to have a park, a car parked in that space 24 hours a day.
But there will be some specific plan that reserves those spaces that you just described for, for retail, you know, for, for use down, down by Parker Street at, at the entrance to the rail trail. Some, somehow that, that will be controlled so that those are actually available.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. One last quick question from, from the northerly parking lot. If, if I'm a pedestrian and I have parked my car, how do I get to the building from there?
Again, similar thing. If you park, it's not a long distance. So we did, you can see how I set up the handicap van loading area. So you have a route directly to the front of the building from the parking area.
How do I get to the residential building?
You would go back out towards Route 1 and follow the walkway. And at the northerly end of the building, you see a little triangle on a sidewalk, just the right above where it says 166, New Report Turnpike. So that's the northerly access to the building. So that would be an egress door.
Okay. Okay.
You done, Bob?
Yeah, done. Thank you.
Okay, Beth.
Hi, yeah. Um, I had a couple of questions. One, um, is just a concern about the Parker Street exit and the proximity to the bike path. I'm just wondering what the visibility is there and if there is, um, you know, what's, that's going to be the status of vegetation? I'm concerned that someone is going to be looking to the left to see if there's traffic coming and accelerate, um, right as they're crossing the, right before they're crossing bike path.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just wondering if there's going to be any signage, um, and what sort of, um, maintenance of, um, vegetation there will be there. Um, another question that I saw on one of the, um, slides, there was a note about modification of the residential units to commercial space that the first floor was built to accommodate that. I was just wondering if you could expand on that a bit. Uh, and then the last thing was, um, I was just curious, the location of the permeable pavers, um, if it was just in that one, um, area sort of in the corner up by one, or if there are some of the pavers that are along the building, um, are also permeable.
Sure. Um, so I'll start with the visibility and, and Scott will cover this, uh, in his presentation in more detail. So, uh, one of the benefits that Minko has, uh, doing their, you know, the, the third phase, I guess, of this, this project is part of one Boston Way, um, for those board members who were here for that permitting. Uh, we just spent quite a bit of time talking about this exact issue. And what came out of that is the inclusion of, um, the, the, a more robust, uh, crosswalk in the lighting system. So it's an automatic, when you approach it, there's flashers that, that go off for the, the crossing. I do enjoy standing there when I'm making observations and setting them off constantly and annoying drivers who think I'm crossing the street, but I'm not. Um, but that, that feature is already there in the, in the painted crosswalk, uh, and signage as well. So that's already in place. Infrastructure's already there. Uh, in this case, the site distance right now coming out of the driveway that is there now, uh, there is very little site distance. The vegetation is overgrown. You really can't see looking to the right at all. Uh, that will be cleared up and, and cleaned out. So, uh, a lot of that, um, overgrowth, uh, will be, will be out there. So you will have a clear sightline looking to the right. And looking to the left, uh, there, there's no, uh, sightline issues as well. Um, and Scott will go over some of the adjustments. We're going to make that intersection, uh, to, uh, slow down vehicles a little bit coming around that corner, uh, which will help with that. Uh, I think what you're perceiving is that, um, the, the driver reaction time. You, if you're down there, you see them coming around that Hill Street corner and they're coming off the highway and they can be moving sometimes. A car might move out, look to make a quick decision. So we're opening all this up while providing some traffic calming measures on the public ways uh, to address that issue. The conversion, uh, component. So one of the district's requirements architecturally is that the first floor has to be a higher elevation and Joe may be able to slap him back the head, but I, I believe it's ten feet floor to ceiling. It might be nine, but the idea behind that, uh, regardless, whatever that is, the idea behind that is to ensure that, um, should, should there be a demand for a commercial space on a ground level in the future, um, that, that space could be converted to a viable commercial use and it's set up to go. Now there are two live working units in this building. Um, one Boston Way had, I think at least six. Don't quote me on that. Um, it's been six years since we permitted that one, but, um, uh, again, the, the flexibility is built in. It's one of the smart growth initiatives to have that flexibility. So, uh, we're not planning any commercial tenants there right now. We are planning on all residential, um, and, uh, to lose units having the live work flexibility. The permeable pavers, um, admittedly, we are still doing a deep dive on vetting that out. I will say what is on the plans now. Um, which perhaps the site plan Andy would show this. I do have some textural changes in the black and white. Um, but a lot of the walkway and pedestrian areas on the site plan, yep, there you go. So you'll see the, um, kind of like a brick hatch a little bit. Uh, so those are all, uh, going to be a sanded joint, uh, paving unit, which will allow water to go between the joints into the ground. In the center of the cul-de-sac, we are planning on kind of a, uh, the perimeter of the cul-de-sac would have a, a three inch reveal vertical rent curb, which is mountable. And then the grass aisle middle would again step up by three inches. So you'd have, it would be drivable if the fire truck wanted to mount it, uh, but fully pervious. Um, the southerly courtyard, um, at the southern end of the building is permeable. Uh, pavers, the little seating areas, just the top of the screen now are permeable. Um, and then, uh, the other walkways are all concrete. So the other patios, et cetera. And I think I mentioned the green roof we added on top of the garage landing as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do want to suggest or some sort of maybe signage about pedestrians at the end of that driveway, just as a possibility. Before somebody takes the right and before the, they hit the, um, flashing lights even, you know, just a sign saying, you know, watch for pedestrians or something to that effect. So. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to Heather next, please.
I have a comment on, or a question rather, on the parking spaces also. When you say that they're designated as a twenty-four hour use based on residents traveling to work and then other people coming in and using those parking spots and then it's sort of flipping at the end of the day. Um, one of my questions is, do you have an anticipated ratio that you anticipate that would be in these parking spots? And if so, when was that established? And my thought is, um, just thinking of people who would have traveled to work eighteen or twenty-four months ago and who won't be in the near future or at all, um, to the extent that they were before. So I was curious how you anticipated that movement being and if you did have sort of a ratio of, you know, one third or twenty-five percent that you thought would be constantly in and out.
Um, I, I think, uh, honestly, that is a near impossible thing to predict for the reasons you pointed out. Um, it's a combination of property management, managing the parking, um, which the applicant is very proficient at. Uh, and they're getting a, a, a firsthand experience with that at one Boston Way right now. Um, we can assume the residential spaces are filled twenty-four hours a day. We are still providing flex spaces that are not going to be assigned to tenants for both the CCRT parking near Parker Street and the retail parking on the north end. So those, those parking spaces are reserved. Will a resident park at them? Perhaps. I can't say, but they won't be an assigned. It would, it might be a guest. It might be something else, but, um, the, 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 one of the reasons we, we incorporated those, uh, spaces in that manner was for that anticipation. So all I can say is the ratio we have overall, uh, we're comfortable with will work. Or we're not going, where the applicant is not going to have issues.
So when you said that you've noticed some changes at, at, um, on Boston Way, have you noticed changes that have had you have to change actual policies over there or you're just noticing like changes in flow right now?
I can't speak to, um, I don't, I, I haven't personally observed changes. So, uh, if I said that poorly, um, is Lou on?
Yeah, yes, Scott, I'm not, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm Lumen Akouchi. Well, I, I had mentioned at the, uh, last, uh, meeting that we, we did a cer- an actual survey and found that, uh, we're currently at one point four, five cars, uh, per, uh, per unit. We have slightly, uh, a hot, slightly higher ratio of, uh, studios in this, uh, building. So I think a one point four ratio would be very realistic. Um, and if I were, and I, I'm, I'm frequently at one Boston Way. I haven't done an actual calculation of the numbers of cars that leave every day. But if I were to guess, I'd say there's about forty percent of the cars do tend to leave, um, to either go to work or, or off for the day. We also have a percentage of, of people that leave, um, for long-term vacations or go to Florida. Uh, I noticed this winter, so, um, I, my, my projection is one point four cars. And, uh, I think we're at one point three nine, if, if I recall. The, the five spaces that we're allocating, um, for the rail trail at the bottom, um, would be, you know, dawn to dusk. We don't want to see any cars, um, people sleeping overnight, obviously, or parking their cars overnight. So those would be monitored, duh, duh, dawn to dusk. And I think the four spaces at the retail, I envision those at seven to five, seven AM to five or six PM. And they would be open for visitors and, and other, and other uses during, uh, the off hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think this is a question for Scott. It's a follow-up. Signed, and there'll be numbers. So if I'm a visitor and I come to visit someone here, how will I know that it's okay? Or where would I park if all the retail and all the rail trail were already taken?
Again, I think this is a, this is a management, um, component and you know, Lou, maybe you can opine a little bit on how you're managing.
Right. Um, we have no issues at one Boston Way, but the way I envision all of the garage parking spaces will be assigned. And all of the spaces to the north will be assigned. But the spaces, I envision that the spaces at the southern end would, would be more kind of unassigned transient parking, uh, open parking. And I, I, you know, there's going to be people that are, like I said, that will leave for weekends or, or, um, uh, you know, there'll be open parking spaces. I'm surmising at that southern end. It's kind of a little bit of what we've done at one Boston Way and haven't had any issues. Um,
Yeah, I can imagine that working. If there are no numbered residential parking designations on those southern,
Right.
access, because that's where I would come in to the main entrance, uh, if I were visiting someone there. So that's great. Thank you.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, we wouldn't want any visitors coming to the northern sec- the, the north sides. It would just be difficult for them to find their way in. I think the people, the residents who park there, you know, they, all they have to do is walk down on Route One and there's that side door, which will be a, uh, that little walkway that you see. There'll be a key fob. So they have a very short walk, but only residents will be able to get into that door, not visitors. So all the visitors will have to come through the Parker Street side, park on the southerly side and gain access. But those parking spaces will be unassigned.
Great. Okay. Is that it on, um, the issues for Scott Cameron from the planning board? I don't see any other hands going up. So I'm gonna suggest we move on to Scott Thornton. I believe he was the next one.
Bonnie, Bonnie, this is Lumen Akouchi again. I just wanted to address one issue that Eric, uh, Mr. Tainter brought up about that connection on the sidewalk. I did have a meeting with the owners of Ashby Cross. He, I would say that it will be ninety-five percent good to go. He's not willing to give me anything in writing, but I said, he said, as long as I paid for it and if it wasn't going to affect any, the, the use of his property, he would be fine with it. So, um, you know, there's no guarantees, but, uh, uh, if I had to call it, I would say there's probably a ninety-five percent chance that we will be building that and installing it.
So you're putting your, um, name on the line for that one?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. I hope we don't have to revisit, revisit, whoops, revisit that, but
Yeah.
Uh, you know what you're doing. So we'll trust that that's going to happen. If it's in the plan, it's going to get built and that's all that we care about.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we're showing it in the plan, but it, it is my plan to do it. Uh, and he's in agreement with it. So, uh, I, I can't, I can't, I can't say that he doesn't tomorrow come back and say, uh, no, you can't build it. I can't imagine why he would do that. I did indicate to him that someday when he would ever develop his parcel, uh, he'd have to be installing a sidewalk and this is just that much less than he would have to incur the cost on since I'd be doing it now and paying for it. So he, he's a business and he gets it.
True. So, so this is Andy Port, uh, uh, apologize. I don't have the ability to raise my hand and zoom as the host. Um, just a question through you, uh, to Lou on that particular, because it might be of concern to the board here. Would you be able to secure confirmation of that, uh, prior to the, uh, expected approval by the planning board? Because it would seem to me that given the importance of that connection, the width of that, um, that the board may want to know that that's incorporating the plan sufficiently.
I, Andy, he, he wasn't prepared to give me anything in writing. So, I mean, he doesn't have to. Um, I, I think if we leave it alone and I just build it, it'll get done. If I press him on it, he'll go to a lawyer and, uh, uh, you know, he may just, it may not get done. I think we stand a much better shot of doing it. Um, I can ask the question, but I, I wouldn't want to make this the permit contingent on it because I have no control over it. And I
That's true, but you did, I said, so it'll be in the plan and you said it won't even be on the plan? That you're gonna continue the sidewalk over that?
Well, I, I, I guess we can show it. I guess, I guess we can show it in the plan, but I can't, pardon me?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Then we, uh, and it's definitely going to have to be in your construction dot drawing. So you might as well put it on your site plan.
But I guess, Bonnie, my, my only issue is what if, what if he doesn't allow me to construct the, the sidewalk?
Well, then you have no way to get your, your people at the end of this walkway down to the crossing. There has to be one there, one way or the other. So I, you know, I, we've talked, I've walked it, we've talked about it. You can't just leave people on a, on a dead end where they have to fend their way to the corner so they can cross Route One.
I get it. And I, and I, and I'm, I, I understand what you're saying and I want to build it and I'm not trying to get out of building it. It's just I, I'm not certain how I can, uh, how I can do it. Excuse me, sorry.
Andy, uh, can I, can I get some help from somebody with more expertise on what should be in plans? Yeah, Rick, Rick, why don't you jump in?
Well, I just, I wanted to say, I, I, I think this is a crucial part of the plan. I don't think it's something that we can leave on a handshake. And, and as I was going through the minutes from one of the December meetings and, um, I, I saw that Andy had requested that any meetings that the, uh, development team had with Mastard, that he be invited to. I think it's important for us to be part of those, us, by, by us, I mean, the city through Andy, to be part of the discussions with Mastard on what happens at that corner. Um, you know, we, it shows on this plan right now that that crosswalk is, is just weird the way it goes and it, and that corner needs to be adjusted somehow. So I think that I think that this is part, this is the opportunity for us to get that done. Um, and maybe the sidewalk happens within the Mastar right of way. Um, you know, I don't know how, how that happens. Maybe it doesn't have to happen on Ashby Cross. But I think that's, this is a really critical part of this project and, you know, to, to have this, this connection done. And, um, and I don't, you know, as I say, we don't think we, we can leave it to, you know, be on a handshake, um, and a, and a promise in the future. It has to be somehow secured in the plans before we take action on it.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it too. Um, so have, um, Lou, can you, have you made any progress with, um, Mast D O T on this intersection?
Uh, I, you know, I'll leave that, uh, uh, I haven't spoken directly to Mast D O T, but Scott Thornton has and, and I guess he can, he can address it. Uh, and, and if Scott's listening, Scott, is there a possibility of putting some sidewalk on the Mast D O T portion of the land? It may not be as wide as the city would want, but, um,
Yeah, the, the, this is Scott Cameron. We, there, there's space there to get a, a three foot wide. It would be about three foot wide by twenty feet to make that connection to it, uh, to the existing concrete. From a, I, I, I'm not, I guess, the challenge we have is we don't have any rights to propose anything on From a, I, I'm not, I guess, the challenge we have is we don't have any rights to propose anything on that property. We don't, it, it's not under control of Minko, so we're kind of in a tough spot where we're, you know, working with, actively working with him. They're not willing to put anything in writing. I, I certainly think some input from the city and push on this would, would certainly help, especially with Mast D O T, if there's anything they can do. I, as, as a professional, I just can't show work on somebody's property that I don't have the right to do it, even if we say, you know, permission by owner required or something. It's just not something I really can't do. We can, so we can further it a little bit more over the next week, see if we can get anywhere with it, but. You know, so I'll, I'll work on that with, with Lou and the, and the owner, see if we can get something. So we'll, we'll keep trying.
Okay, and please bring Andy into that if, if you need city help to move it along. Because I'm gonna mark this as something outstanding for now. And then we can move on to something else. Is that all right? Okay, thanks, Lou. All right. Finally, Scott Thornton, let's, let's go with your presentation, please.
So, Andy, I think we've got some slides at, towards the end of of Scott. Oh, there we go. Perfect. So for the record, Scott Thornton with Vaness and Associates, we prepared the traffic assessment for the project. And, you know, I, I think the, the, the traffic assessment is is not the real story here. The real story is, is the access. And so I'll just touch briefly on the study. You know, we did, we submitted it last month. We did counts in November at three locations, adjusted for seasonal conditions and the effects of the pandemic. Standard traffic study looking at crash data, site distances, vehicle speeds. In terms of the vehicle trip generation, you know, not a large trip generator, looking at about thirty-three morning peak hour trips and forty-two evening peak hour trips between the, the Route One access and the Parker Street access. Traffic increases were estimated at one point four to two point one percent during peak hours with no change in level of service and just a second or two increases in delay at, at either location. Or either of the locations. So this, this slide shows the study area in the three locations, Hill Street and Route One, Hill Street and Parker Street and Parker Street at Route One. And we had, we had included these locations really because we wanted to understand what was happening at Hill and Parker Street, and also we had discussions with D O T initially, and they indicated that they were interested in the, in the operation of the Hill Streets and Route One intersection and how the project would impact that. And, and quite honestly, there's, there's a minimal impact from this project at that, at that location. So I think the, you know, the, the study is what it is. And, and then there were some, we also provided a, a memorandum or a letter responding to comments that were made from city staff. And probably the, the most, the most critical one was the, was the Hill Street and Parker Street intersection, where there was a, you know, the, the comment was made, the traffic coming from Route One on Hill Street has a tendency to, to move around the, the corner onto Parker Street with, with some degree of speed. And, and there, the concern was for visibility there with the, with the two driveways that are just west of the, really three driveways, or just west of, of Hill Street. And what this, what we're proposing shown on this slide is to, to further channelize the Hill Street intersection where it comes into Parker Street. Now, what's difficult is that the, it's not something that, that you would, for that right turn movement, there's no conflicting. No, nothing to conflict with that movement, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't put a stop sign there. It, it would just not be, it would not be observed and, and people would just would just ignore it after, after some time. But we think that the, you know, with the, the combination of, of reducing the radius there, providing some channelizing striping in a gore pattern as shown, which tightens up that radius and makes it so that vehicles should slow down coming into that, into that intersection. We're also proposing the addition of text pavement markings on the roadway showing slow driveways ahead in succession. And the idea is that this increases the, increases the visual awareness of the, of the driveways that are in the vicinity where motorists are going to be passing. And, you know, also gives, pushes the, pushes the Hill Street approach to Parker Street further away from the corner. So we're actually increasing the site distance from what's there now with, with the, with the proposed channelization through the pavement markings. What this, what this also does is, you know, with, with the pavement markings there, it allows, it, it directs the vehicles, the passenger vehicles to slow down and stay within the lane. Larger tractor trailers that may need that large radius to make it around the corner and stay within their lane can traverse the, the pavement markings without an issue. And then obviously, we would reapply the, the stop sign and the stop markings on the, the movement for the Hill Streets left turn to Parker Street. And in that case, you know, that, those vehicles do have to, they do conflict with Parker Street eastbound. So the stop sign and stop line use are warranted. The next slide should show what I'm talking about in terms of the, of the increase in site distance. And so whereas before we had about a hundred and five feet from the, from the current driveway to the, to vehicles coming out from Hill Street, we're looking at now something closer to a hundred and sixty-seven feet just by, you know, the, the slight shift of the driveway to the west from the current, the current driveway location and the pushing of the, of the Hill Street approach to the east closer to Route One. And, you know, I, and I, I think, as Delisle mentioned, that, you know, the, and also Scott Cameron iterated that the, the issue with these, with the vegetation there on the, to the right of the, or to the west side of the driveway is temporarily or currently hindered by the vegetation. But that would be cleared and improved as a, as a condition of the project. The, the next slide goes to the Route One access issue. And we had had discussions with, with D O T initially, talking about this, the, this project and, and the proposed access. And, and this was when it was, when there were, when there were more access points that were proposed. And since then, the site's been reduced to just have these, these two access points. And at the time, they did not feel that a deceleration lane was warranted for this project. However, based on comments from the city, we have put this concept plan together and, and it was, you know, it is, it is hot off the presses. And we intend to, to take this to D O T to get their, get their opinion of the design. We think that it's, it's a valid concept. We think that the, you know, by providing the, the deceleration lane and a full twelve-foot width of, of, of use of the shoulder in order to provide some type of bypass for traffic that's headed south on Route One. We think that that's a valid use of, of this area. And, you know, we, we will expect to have some modification of the guardrail that's there. But again, this, this is a, it's a little more formalized design than what's across the street with the, the residential development that I think was, was, was referenced in comments from the city. You know, on the one hand, we have, we have over six hundred and fifty feet of site distance at this location at the, at the entrance driveway location. The traffic volumes on Route One are not that substantial, you know, about five hundred vehicles an hour during the, during the peak hours in two lanes. That's not a substantial amount of traffic. The traffic signal at Low Street really introduces a lot of gaps into the Route One traffic flow. So when, when cars come past this point, they're coming in, they're coming in groups of three or four, six or seven or so. And, and then there's a, then there's a gap where there's not a lot of traffic. In fact, there's, there's no traffic for, for long periods. But that said, you know, we understand the city's concern, and so we're, we anticipate that we'll present this to D O T as a, as sort of an update on our current thinking. And, and we think that this is, again, we think it's a valid design for, for the proposal. You know, with, with twenty, with twenty parking spaces in this area, this, the, there were, there will not be a lot of traffic going in and out of these driveways. You know, we're anticipating somewhere between two and seven trips entering the driveways, you know, during the peak hours. So that's, that's not, that's not a lot of traffic. But, you know, there's, there's always the, the concern that we could improve the, improve the conditions a little bit for traffic entering the site and for also traffic bypassing it, the site on Route One. So I think that, that that's, that's how we plan to proceed with D O T. Some of the other things that D O T had mentioned, they, getting back to the, to the Hill Street, to the Hill Street sidewalk. They had also indicated that this was something that they were, that was on their radar. They had, they had asked us to look at the replacing the pedestrian signal equipment at the Hill Street and Route One intersection. And, you know, the one thing that, that, you know, I, I mentioned was that we didn't have control over, over this stretch of, you know, this segment of, of property between the site and Hill Street. And, and this was something that they acknowledged, and they acknowledged that they couldn't make us, you know, make us put a sidewalk on someone else's property, but, you know, to do our best. And I think that's what, that's what the applicant is, is focusing on. So I think that that's it for the traffic discussion. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Planning Board members, Rick, I see your hand up. Let's go.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say that idea of the, the deceleration lane on Route One, that redesign looks really good to me. I like the fact that you're reducing the radius entering from fifty feet to twenty-five feet. I think that, that fifty-four radius was, was a major concern to me, and I think the twenty-five foot radius will do a lot to slow down the traffic as it enters that parking area, so I commend you for that. Going over to Hill Street, I really don't think that the, the painting is gonna do anything. And I would ask if you would consider a mountable apron for that area, maybe a cobbled mountable apron. Because with just paint, cars are just going to run right over it and, and go smoothly around the intersection. So if that's a possibility, I would like to, to see that. Maybe, as I say, maybe a mountable, maybe a, an inch or two above the, above the, the asphalt and maybe a cobbled surface, so the cars are really uncomfortable going onto it and trucks can make the turn fairly easy. This is the intersection at Hill and, and Parker.
Yeah, this is Hill and Parker. I'll go ahead, go ahead.
So that was, that was, that's my second point. My third point is, at the driveway on Parker, I have, I share Beth's concerns about the proximity of the crosswalk. You're really moving, when I measured it, you're moving the driveway, seems to me almost thirty feet to the west, closer to the crosswalk, and it looks like the end of the curve, the curve in the driveway is only about eighteen feet from the crosswalk, which is, you know, really, really very close when you, when you look at it. And, you know, vegetation and site distance, this is one thing, but the crosswalk crosses at an angle and the curb is, the curb radius on the exiting driveway is twenty feet, which I don't think is really necessary for a residential driveway. I think that if you were to tighten up the, the, the radius on the exit and pull it as far back from the, well, tightening up the radius would pull it further back from the crosswalk, which I think would be a major safety thing, because you're gonna have, you know, lots of people running up and down, running, walking, riding their bikes, skateboarding up and down that crosswalk. And if you, anything that encourages cars to move quickly out of that driveway is going to be a safety issue. So those are my three things, the, the. Obviously, I've talked about the Hill Street at Route One is my concern. Hill Street and Parker Street, I think you could do something physical rather than just paint. And, and doing something to, to slow down traffic exiting the driveway and pull the driveways far back from the crosswalk as she possibly can.
Yeah, if, if I could respond, I, I think that the, you know, we, we did consider the some type of, of cobble or mounted island there at Hill and Parker. And we decided to go with the striping more for auditory reasons as when you have, when you have trucks or vehicles going over that type of, you know, cobbled surface or, or, you know, even something like squirted concrete. It's a, it's a, it's an audible sound. And if there's, if there's trucks that are going through there at, you know, odd hours of the, of the day or night, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna hear that when those axles and those tires bounce over that surface. It's just, it's just something else to, something else to consider. But, but, but point, point taken. And, and I believe we can, we can look at the driveway, possibly tightening up the radius. I would say that, you know, we expect most of the traffic to be turning left out of the, out of the driveway to head to Route One. And, you know, when, when traffic is making the, the right turn out, they will basically be, you know, I, I, I get the point about them looking to the left for, for a gap in the, in the traffic. But they will also be looking right at the, right at the bike path. So, so I think that the, the visibility will be evident for them.
Okay, thank you. Alden?
Yeah, hi. First, my, one of my comment was, I think was largely covered by what Rick just said, but I was going to confirm that they were talking about just, just paint being applied at the Hill Street, Parker Street intersection. And I tend to agree that just paint is not gonna do it for the way most people drive in that section. Otherwise, actually, just a quick comment on the, what was just said in response. I would think a fair number of people would be heading out and taking a right turn, heading towards Route I ninety-five as well as Route One. I, I don't know if, if your studies showed anything on that, but, I mean, that just would be my impression offhand, just a side comment. The other, the other comment I had was, it may not be material, but on the, the twelve twenty-two traffic impact assessment on, on page ten, the diagram shows the crosswalk on the wrong side of Hill Street when it comes, comes across Route One. So I don't know if that's throwing anything off in, in the work that you're doing, but I just wanted to point that out. It, it shows it coming into the south side of, of Hill Street at that section where it really comes into the north side. So that's the little blue marker on page ten of the traffic.
Yeah, and, and I think that it was just a, it was.
Yeah, and, and I think that it was just a, it was just a spacing issue, I think we had, we had too much, we probably should have blown that up a little better. Um, but, but you're right, the, the crosswalk is on the. It, it's on the, it's on the south side of Hill Street on the northbound side of Route One, and it's on the north side of, uh, of Hill Street on the north side of Route One.
Uh, yeah, on the, on the southbound side of Route One, exactly, yeah. So that was all, I, I noticed that in there, so those, um, yeah, so again, just, just re- reiterating the, uh, concerns as far as the. Uh, Hill Street and Parker Street intersection with, if that's just, just paint.
Yeah, I, I think we were, we were thinking probably more like thermoplastic, uh, which would, which would still have some type of. Tactile response, but not to the same auditory level as, as a cobbled surface would.
Good, and is that it for planning board members at this, sorry? Looks like, um, we can move on to the next presenter. Who's next on your team?
I'm sure the, this is Scott Cameron, that, that's what we had for tonight. We are going to take the next week and, uh, between the, the last presentation you had and the technical one. Uh, I guess I, I didn't hear many, uh. Things tonight that would make a substantial change to the plans, but we, we plan on providing you with a complete set. Um, inclusive of the architectural, landscape architecture and the technical drawings. Um, for your, you know, hopefully, hopefully that's the final, the final push for the next meeting. Unless there's anything else you wish to talk about tonight.
Um, well, I had something actually on, um, on the building itself. Um, and just to get my two cents worth in there to see if it makes any sense to think about it. Before you finalize the plan, on the Route One side, um, this may be for Joe. Um, Route One side, there, um, do we have any details on the ground floor patios? We had asked for that earlier, we were a little concerned that there ought to be some screening there. Um, and secondly. Has there been any, would there be any consideration of replacing the Juliet balconies? With actual balconies where maybe just four people could sit around a small table. Um, on that Route One side, I know it's not necessarily desirable or have an expectation that. Um, folks would want to sit out there because it is Route One, but by the time you get up to the second. Third and fourth floors, you're way above the street and your view could be. Um, would go over any of the traffic. And it just might make those units more livable, um, in the sense that they have access to. Serious access to the outside, um, through a real balcony, um, rather than a Juliet. So I'd like to hear your comments on that.
Okay, hi, this is Joe Circovich from Arrow Street. Uh, as far as the, uh, screening of the ground floor terraces goes, yes, we had a design meeting this morning just on that very topic. And we do plan to provide some low wall, um. Masonry screening down near the sidewalk level. For those terraces on portions of the building. And then provide additional landscaping behind those walls. Uh, to really enhance that, that privacy, uh, all along that north building. On, uh, on the lower side of the sidewalk, so that's what we plan on doing for the terrace screening. Okay, so, uh, as far as the balconies go, that's something we can look at. We talked a lot about whether it would be appropriate, as you had mentioned, since you're on the. Turnpike side to provide full balconies, whether anyone's going to actually go out there. Uh, but we can certainly take a look at that and see where it makes sense, whether it makes sense on the entire. Um, facade along that side or just portions of the building. But, um, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Hey, hey, Joe, uh, this is Louvena Kuchia. We did, uh, provide a balcony on the fourth floor that is a common area, I don't know if you can show that. On a plan. But you created that exterior space on the fourth floor in addition to all the other space and community space, but. Um, and, and what we found at, at One Boston Way is. The majority, the, the, yes, that, I don't know if you can point that out, Andy, that. Right, so that, that's intended to be a, a group gathering exterior space. What we found at One Boston Way is that we, we have a very close-knit community and people tend to gather at the fire pit. Or they gather in the community space itself, and I can envision, uh, doing the same thing. Uh, uh, when they want to go out and get some outside space or, of kind of this balcony effect, going to that fourth floor space to meet other people.
Yeah, Lou, I appreciate that, and my point was a slightly different, it had to do with each unit itself. In giving access, um. We often don't, we of- often don't think that people would want to have. Open space on a very busy, um, sort of pass-through road, but. I was thinking about it when I came down Route One, uh, yeah, turned off of Route One, um, into Merrimack Street. Um, there's a, uh, intersection there and there used to be a restaurant called Mister India. And now there is a two or three unit building there. And they have outdoor space attached to that, and I thought, well, if they. Can want to sit outside there, I could imagine people in this building might as well. So it's the idea of giving people something in their actual living space to extend to the outside. So give it a thought and let us know what you come up with for next time. Okay, I see Rob, uh, Bob's, uh, hand up. Speak.
I think Rick's hand was up first.
Oh, doesn't matter, I'm not playing favorites here, go for it.
Uh, just, just a, a quick question, last meeting, we, we talked about, uh. Potential uses for the, the retail space. And given the importance of retail in the smart growth district. Um, I just wondered if there had been any thought. Relative to that, and, and just wondered, Joe, if you could talk about. You know, if I'm a, if I'm a resident in the building. And I'm either heading for my car or I'm heading to the train. Um, and, and there's coffee in that retail space. What's, what's the most probable convenient connection for, for the residents in the building to really take advantage of that? So I mean, this, this, this is a component of the smart growth district, and I think it warrants. Uh, a little bit more conversation about where this is headed in terms of specific use and how successful it might be relative to the overall plan.
Yeah, this is Joe Circovich, so we, we did talk about a lot of different uses when we were thinking about this space. Anything from a farmer's market to a cafe. To some sort of seasonal use that could be like something like a bicycle shop or a ski rental place in the winter. Um, also in conjunction with something like a food truck that you see there. Uh, so there are a number of possibilities, it just depends on what we can really get in there to survive and to become a real. Kind of destination place for the bike path, I think, you know, when you, I, I've ridden on that bike path. Many times, and there's a lot of interesting things on it, once you get out to this area. Uh, you're kind of looking for something, uh, interesting to, to stop off and maybe get a drink or a. Uh, a pastry or something, so there's a number of different things that could happen there. Uh, we're not quite sure how it's all going to pan out, but, uh, we were hopeful that it, it has a lot of potential. Um, as far as a resident. Getting access to this, again, they would probably go from the central lobby and walk down the sidewalk or. An inclement weather, they could exit at the stair location, which is a little bit closer to the corner there. And walk up the sidewalk, grab a coffee or a pastry, and then get back onto the bike path and walk down toward the train station that way. Uh, so that's sort of what we had in mind for, for this area.
Okay, I mean, I just have, have concerns about, uh, you know, specifics related to that, but, you know, we've talked about that at length, so. I'll, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, just, this isn't what I was going to talk about, but I think that there always has been. A destination, which in, in past years, which is Haley's, my kids and grandkids. Always love to go up the bike path to go to Haley's, so I think that replacing that should be, should be a pretty easy thing to do. My questions are actually for Scott Cameron about, there's just two questions of things that I don't understand in the site plans. If we could go to the, to site plan and look at, again, the intersection of, uh, the driveway and, and Parker Street. It's just a, a question, I'm not really sure what's going on there. Um, can we just move to that for a sec? Either utility plan, maybe. Can we go to the utility plan, well, actually, this would work. Um, so, so there's an existing, it shows up more clearly in the utility plan. But there's an existing utility pole in the middle of the proposed driveway. It's right off to the left of the existing driveway, and the utility plan, I don't see how it shows how you're going to deal with that. Presumably, you're going to create a new utility pole somewhere else and, and redo the, the overhead wires, but, um. That just, I think, you may not have, have solved that problem yet, but that's just something that popped out at me. Um, the other thing is actually on the site.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Rick, this is Andy, just to interject, I apologize, I just want to make sure that folks can see the, uh, utility plan that I'm showing. It looked like it was, might have been a delay on soon, are you?
That's actually, I'm seeing the, the grading plan at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry, but the, sorry, my apologies, the, the pole is actually indicated, uh, on that plan, just so folks can see that, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the utility plan actually shows the wires.
Okay, yeah, my apologies, yeah.
Yep, okay, um, the other question was on the site plan, and, um. If we can get to that in the same location. Zoom in on the corner there, so there's two labels that are on top of each other, one is pointing to the, uh. Architectural access board route to the parking spaces, but the other one says proposed stop line and stop sign. And it's pointing to the middle of the road. And I, I wasn't sure what the intent of that proposed stops, stop line and stop sign was.
This is, this is Scott Cameron, um, they, thank you, Mr., Mr. Tanner, I, uh, that, for pointing that out, yes, that is a note that got moved. And I didn't see it before we published this, but, uh, we will make sure we fix that.
So where?
Stop lines at the entrance.
Okay, okay, gotcha, okay, good, thank you.
Is that it from the planning board? Because I want to go back to something else that's outstanding, that's different from what we've talked about. Andy, um, this has to do with the, uh, landscaping maintenance plan. And what you received, uh, today from the Parks Department. To.
Yeah.
Verify their request, please, and I think you were going to show us something.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair, so we actually, um, Jordy Vining, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up the, uh. A bunch of PDFs open here, I'm just trying to pop the, uh, size one, here we go. Um, so you might recall that Jordy Vining had been commenting previously, um. Uh, relative to landscaping, and this is just one of the, on the site plan itself. You can see he's marked up here the area that was in question, whether or not, uh, the developer should be responsible for land, uh, maintenance, uh, on a go-forward basis after the initial plantings. Um, of this area, uh, and, uh, additional portion of the corridor that isn't necessarily being affected by. Uh, the developer, we, uh, we had reached out to the Parks Department to get clarification of what, uh, because they actually have jurisdiction. Over the trail and its maintenance, um, you know, after Jordy's worked on it for construction, but. Um, uh, for ongoing maintenance and use of the trail, the Parks Department has oversight. Um, and they had to basically indicate in a nutshell that they, uh, their suggestion, uh, through these read the director. Um, was a request that the developer be responsible for maintaining the plantings that they have installed, so, um, that, you know, it seems reasonable. Um, because of the plantings that the developers installing, um, that they maintain those on a go-forward basis, um, you know, which is typical of any site, uh, where plantings are installed. Um, and, and rather than, um, uh, asking them to do the mowing, because they do plan as a parks department to do that, um, on a regular basis of their own. Uh, unless Minco was interested in doing it on a more frequent basis, they, they felt that that was sufficiently addressed and they didn't, uh, necessarily want, um. Uh, you know, may go to, to need to or to be going outside of the areas that they've done plantings on for this project. Um, and the only other area that they had requested through, uh, the developer to take into account, uh, on an ongoing basis, they thought would be. Uh, these areas, uh, next to the arch, so, um, that would be essentially the feedback that we've most recently gotten late, um. Uh, for today's meeting from the Parks Department.
And then the idea was from our previous discussion that we, there would not be a condition. But rather, there is going to be a maintenance agreement with the city, um, how do we, Andy, I guess this is back to you, how do we, um. Uh, make, make sure that happens if there's no condition on this landscaping maintenance.
Well, yeah, and I think the, the condition, if you will, was, was, we saw where Joey was coming from with that comment initially, the concern there. Uh, I'll, I'm happy to coordinate as necessary to get any sort of agreement with the Parks Department. Uh, in place for the developer, I'd have to defer to, to Lou and, uh, and his team as far as. Any concerns or coordination on their end, but I'm, I'm happy to coordinate those, those details. Basically, the Parks Department can, can sign something informal, um, to deal with any details that might be, uh, of concern, but I know that, um, from Minco's side, there was a little bit of concern about. Um, one, the, uh, conditioning like that and how it might affect, um, the review of financing for projects, given that it's, um, something across the, the property line, if you will. Um, however, I, I would note here that the, the, the flip side of that argument might be that the plantings are, are being installed as part of this project and, and might make sense for the. Uh, same landscape company to be, uh, overseeing those areas, but, um, that was the, the concern that perhaps some sort of a, um. Site agreement or something with the city or the Parks Department or, uh, informal coordination as opposed to a formal condition of the decision, but Lou may want to speak to that as the applicant.
Well, that's what I was referring to, so the, I think that's, it's already decided, um, that it'll be an informal agreement with the city, but I just.
I'm sorry, I do know that Bob Ullig has raised his hand as well for the, uh.
Yeah, okay, let's go to Bob, thank you.
Thank you, um, Bob Ullig, Halverson Tyanbon, that, that, the, it's, I'm having trouble seeing the notes exactly, but. Uh, in terms of what they say, but it, it sounds a little different than my last discussion that I had with Jordy, which was that. The, the developer would do all the planting of all the plants. But that my understanding that the, that for the rail trail in the area between the rail trail and where the plantings are. That the city would maintain the mowing of those areas between the rail trail and kind of where the, the planted buffer was.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Bob, just to catch you up, what, what has new, perhaps since your discussion with Jordy who's, who's out this week, uh, is, is that we had reached out to the Parks Department directly. I'd asked Jordy to reach out to the Parks Department directly, um, because they are the department that oversees, uh, the maintenance of that area. And it seemed inappropriate for us to be, uh, commenting without their input, uh, directly, so, uh, Lee's Read had commented on that, uh, as late as today. Um, you know, just before this meeting, so that I could take that, um, that new context from their, or their department into account, so that's just the new information, I guess, since you last spoke to Jordy.
I guess my only question is, is, is there, is that a bit odd relative to kind of the rail trail and the adjacencies, like the city. And the Parks Department would maintain those buffers kind of. Uh, north of this clouded limit of work, and then. Minco would maintain it between Parker Street and this kind of. You know, where the, um, where Clyde the horse is, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I can't, I, obviously, that's a, obviously distinction to be made about the rest of the quarter going north and this portion right here. Again, I'd have to defer to the Parks Department, but you know, obviously from there, I, I can understand from their perspective. Um, they have a lot of resources to maintain, there's obviously concern here that, um, this is a portion that could perhaps better and maybe more efficiently, you know, be managed by the same company that is doing the landscaping. Uh, for the rest of the project here, uh, but again, I, it's completely understandable that, you know, there's a distinction here, the rest of the quarter is in fact maintained by the Parks Department.
Sure, I'll, I'll defer to Lou if you want to comment on, on this.
Well, I, I, i- if I'm understanding the, the request, uh. Any of the plantings and, uh, that we do is what the plant, uh, what the Parks Department expect us to maintain. Is that correct?
Uh, that is through Lee's Read as of today, yes, that's what she, again, it's a request that this issue be, uh, resolved before the planning board, understandably, and anything that could be coordinated with the Parks Department, she can take care of with me, but. Um, that was the request, not that the quarter per se, uh, be maintained, but rather that the plantings that are installed by the developer.
Right, the plantings themselves, that, that.
Correct.
Is that, so is that, okay, in the public quarters, right, but it's, it's also highlighting the area extending across the rail trail. And that, yeah, this is area of landscaping in the public quarter that's recommended to be adopted and.
Yeah. And yeah, yeah, Bob, I'm sorry, just to catch up, but I was trying to explain later earlier and I maybe I didn't clarify enough for everybody, but Jordy had originally requested whether or not this entire area should be maintained. It was since then that Lee's read as the Parks Director had clarified that it was not, in fact, your point that they were asking for that whole area, but rather if you pull that line back to essentially, as as Lou just said, just the plantings that have been installed. The areas have been affected by the plantings. That's what Lee's read had said today.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure. A- a- and we're we're okay with that. I mean, that's it's a significant amount of plantings at a significant cost. And the last thing we'd like to I mean, we want to see is that not grow to maturity. So we're okay with that, obviously.
And Luca, could you speak just for the board's clarification and given Lee's read's comment relative to the plantings around the the arch? Is that any concern on your part or those obviously aren't being affected by you?
Oh, I see. I thought we were referring to those like the two seating areas, the two connections between our property and the rail trail.
Yeah, that's why I pointed out, because again, Jordy had inquired about that piece. He had highlighted it and it was the the only specific area that is not being affected by the applicant's plans here, your plans for landscaping that the both Jordy had called out earlier, but that Lee's read had made mention of today saying could the developer also take care of this cluster around the arch while doing the the maintenance on the plantings they've installed?
Okay, yeah, we can agree to that. It's kind of we'll adopt those two areas, I guess. Yep.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. And obviously, we can coordinate with these read anything that, you know, you might need on your end.
Is there any plantings that exist there now?
There are plantings there today. So the idea was that I, as I understand through her, was that it would just be to maintain what's there. So and again, I just got these comments late today, so it's the best I could do to kind of share with you this evening.
Yep.
Thank you, Andy. Bob, your hand's still up. Did you have anything more you wanted to add? Bob, you like?
No, sorry about that. I'll lower it.
Okay, great. Yes.
Apologize just handing again. If I could just interject, just to let you know, Karen had submitted from Minko a last minute letter today relative to an update on the waivers and I'm happy to put that on the screen and summarize that.
Right in front of me and I wanted to acknowledge it because everything is pretty much done, except there is a CAD files to be submitted upon approval of final plan set accepted and two conditions. They're moving signage plan and details to a condition in the decision. And that would be those that plan and details would be submitted prior to issuance of a building permit. So I would assume that would get included in the list that you're creating, Andy, of conditions for us to review next meeting.
Yes, and just to yeah, just to confirm, the office has no objection to the update here, obviously, that shows status of what's been submitted, but either that or the conditions that have been proposed here. We, I think in the case of one Boston way, we actually approved the signage after the initial approval, it was understood that that would be submitted later. So I have no objection to that from the office's perspective, and I think that the board can obviously look at that detail at that time. As far as the housing plan elements, that was something we experienced with one Boston way where I think we required it prior to the billing permit and it made more sense to do it prior to occupancy, because the HCD itself takes a long time to review those documents with no fault of the applicant.
Just a detail here, it says prior to issuance of the occupancy permit. That means the first occupancy permit, correct?
That is correct. Yes, and we and we would actually Caitlin and I would try to craft that to be a little bit more specific and clear, but yes, you're correct.
Okay. All right, everybody. This is a public hearing, so I want to ask if there is any public comment. And if there is to state your name and your address and let us know what's on your mind. Any takers? Andy, you didn't see anybody?
It does not look like we have any takers, Chair.
Okay, we'll close the public comment section and look to a the next time we're going to see the applicant. I believe it sounds like they're ready for January 19th. Is that correct?
It certainly sounds to me that's the case. Caitlin and I would be crafting the draft decision or the conditions, if you will. The decision is relatively straightforward and formulaic for the 40 yard district is bullet plate elements, but the special conditions for your consideration for your next meeting, assuming you want to continue us to the 19th, Lou. And that being the case, you could also look at the, we could review the final set of plans to make sure there are no concerns or inconsistencies, but if 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 the board is in a good place and the applicant believes that they can do the turnaround, that would make sense. What I don't know is whether or not Scott and his team would have sufficient time to do that so that we could get that and confirm on our end prior to the board's meeting.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. I we should be prepared.
Good. Andy, I wanted to add also, there are a list of dimensional waivers as well that we have to vote on at the time of decision. So include that in your
Will do.
Your listing of elements of the decision.
Understood.
Great. So are we any any other further comments from anybody before I ask for a motion to continue? Great. Thank you very much to the development team for all the work you've put into the design and and all the details you shared with us tonight really is moving in very much the right direction. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Great. So I will ask for a board member to make a motion to continue this hearing to January 19th.
This is Beth. So moved.
Thank you, Beth. Second?
I'll second.
Alden.
Okay. And let me call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Thank you. We'll see you all on the 19th.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey. Our next agenda item is approval not required for 14 Pine Street.
Hi there. This is Andy. I will just provide a quick summary of that A and R plan. These are pretty standard. Obviously, we do these pretty routinely, but just for clarification, it's a little easier, I think, to look at the ortho photo, but this is the property in question. It's at 14 Pine Street, so you get an idea of the the shape of that lot. The idea here is to break off a piece at the back here and add it to this parcel right here. So I'll just show that that actual PDF plan to you, which is in black and white, but I find that the aerial photographs are a little bit easier to to compare against. So here is the the black and white of that plan, and you can see from that lot, the larger lot, they're breaking off parcel A, adding it to this lot right here. And again, the office has no objection, recommends endorsement of the A and R plan in accordance with the subdivision regulations.
There any questions from board members? Then I will take the motion to approve the A and R for 14 Pine Street.
I make the motion to endorse the plan.
Endorse the plan. Thank you very much. I knew there was a word in there I was looking for. As second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, Alden. And we'll start with you for the roll call, Alden.
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, that is endorsed. Moving to our next topic, I want to give a little introduction why we're looking at this short term rental unit zoning amendment. There's been a lot of discussion with the Planning Development Committee of the City Council. There has been a reconciliation of the zoning and the licensing amendments. Obviously, we're just concerned with the zoning. There are some significant changes in the zoning from when we submitted our recommendations last a year ago in October that I thought you should know about and we should discuss before the potential joint public hearing on this on February 2nd. So I wanted to have you all make sure you understand where it's going and raise any concerns now, which of course you can raise then as well. The three outstanding ones for me are the biggest is wherever short term rentals will be allowed, they will be allowed only by special permit. And the Permit Granting Authority is the Zoning Board of Appeals. My understanding is that councillors were uncomfortable with letting it be by right as we had proposed in most of those areas, actually all of those areas. We either had by right or not permitted permitted. They wanted to go slowly. They wanted to go carefully. And they proposed the special permit to give more control over who actually gets not only gets through zoning, but gets a is eligible for licensing because they obviously have to be cleared with the zoning before they even apply for a license. There may be other reasons that people heard, and I'm going to ask anyone else on the board who has attended those meetings to to chime in. Secondly, parking is required on site. One space per rented bedroom. And third, a very interesting change, if someone wants to offer a short term rental for less than 14 days, and that's it, and the entire year, they do not need a license. They need a certificate from the administrator, and that's going to be a separate person to what anyone we have right now. So there is planning for a short term rental. I don't know if they're called administrator, whatever, someone on staff who will be reviewing all these these requests. And those were the three things that stuck out for me, and I'm going to turn it over to Bob, who has been very involved.
Yes.
Just a couple, couple of things to add to what you said, Chair. On the special permit, there was a lot of discussion about that and, you know, a special permit can be structured such that it is added to the deed for the property and and it is granted in perpetuity then. This special permit is granted to the property owner. The way I understand it, and I believe it's still structured this way, granted for three years and needs to be renewed after three years. So that's that's the stipulation in there. It gives gives a little bit more control, a little bit more flexibility within the special permit process. In terms of the parking, my understanding is it's off street, but on site parking for the short term rental unit, one space per bedroom rented in addition to the parking required for the owner of the property. So that's that's a fairly strict requirement that that I think could be problematic for a number of properties. The other language that was added, there are two types of short term rental units where the owner is still potentially present. In all of these short term rental unit types, it is the owner's principal residence. And there has been language added that says that when the owner is renting the short term rental unit, they must be present overnight to supervise. Which is another important stipulation on this. And the the last comment is, and and this kind of came in towards the end, because you can imagine the Zoning Board of Appeals could potentially be under a lot of pressure relative to reviews. I believe there's language in there now that there there are, there can be no variances, no exceptions taken, no diverting from the specific requirements of of the zoning ordinance. So I I think I think there's been a lot of discussion about this over the past several months. I think the language has been added that I think is really important. And, you know, I haven't looked at this last version. I don't think it's changed from from several weeks ago, but I I think it's it's it covers just about everything that we have talked about over the past few months.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Heather.
So am I trying to stand this correctly that the proposed here is that each property would get a special permit? Now you understand it would last for three years, but you also then have an annual license that would be renewed annually? So it's you're going through a two tier process initially to get your property to qualify. Is that true? What I'm reading? You have a license and a special permit?
That is correct. From the I I will say, thank you, Heather, from the office's perspective, I I would note, by the way, that the Chair and the Vice Chair of the ZBA are here tonight. I've talked with them before about this. As as I've expressed to the council members, when they were last discussing this, I was a bit concerned that the both not only the staff, putting aside the staff and the paperwork involved, that applicants and in particular the volunteer board members would be spending a lot of time with the special permit process in addition to a license. So one of my concerns is or questions is is their ability to cover the same ground via the license and not necessarily need the special permit. I understand there was some reference to council advising that was necessary. And I'm hoping to to sort that out a little bit better in the coming weeks, but yes, you're correct. It would require both of those approvals.
Okay, and if if it remained that way, and I might be wrong, but earlier, did we say that the idea was to have this program up and running by June?
I, yes, going along with my comment just before, yes.
Okay. That doesn't seem possible to me that they could fit all that in, but I don't I don't know how they would manage that. So that's a concern to me that we're going to like, you know, bottleneck everything else going on to accommodate this. It's a short time period with two hoops to jump through. And then one more thing I just noticed. Also, each operator being a an owner of a property, so everybody can only own one short term rented property within the city?
That's correct, because you have to, you can only have a short term rental in or adjacent to your your residence.
Your principal resident.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the that's the whole idea of of avoiding these investment properties where people own multiples and it gets out of hand because of the noise. I think that was one of the first things where that went that we talked about that.
That one. I was just surprised to see it say, but it makes sense. I just I missed that one. Yeah, so I actually, so my concern would be that putting a lot, putting a lot on the pipeline for the licensing and the special permit, especially on this first run. I think it's it's a lot to ask.
Um, Chair, I would just note that similar to Heather's comment, just now the Chair of the ZBA, Rob Chanpetty, just raises hand. I I presume you may want to speak to that point as the Chair.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to get bring Rob into the discussion anyway, please.
Hello, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. This is Rob Chanpetty. I I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm the, as you, as you may know, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and and as Andy pointed out, I believe our Vice Chair, Mr. Mark Moore is is here as well. And we do have been, as I know you have been toiling for for weeks and months as have as has as have we in in an attempt to try to refine down to, I guess, the best possible version of the intended spirit of of this effort. I I know that Madam Chair, you have also attended some of the joint planning and development meetings. I know I have with a few other members of our of our board. So, you know, for what it's worth, and I offer this just as additional, I suppose, feedback from from the benefit of the zoning board and sort of what we're up against, so that you as the as the planning board and the advisory board to to the council in their effort to refine this, that you have the benefit of what we sort of see boots on the ground as well. And I think, Madam Chair, it was either you or it was perhaps Ms. Rogers who had correctly noted the fear of absorption and and the expectation, which I I agree with Ms. Rogers, and I think we share this among the the zoning board with, I'll I'll suspect to say without exception, that given our docket and what we toil through, you know, as do you, we deal with the legal criteria of every special permit, special permit for nonconformities, variance and such, and it's tedious, often legally wrote. Often legally wrote work, so it it takes quite a bit of time and attention. Sometimes late into the evening, and I know you're no stranger, your board's no stranger to late evening meetings either. Based on our docket, looking forward and our obligation under chapter forty A to grant either a yes or a no in response to a permit application, lest that application be de facto approved, which I know isn't the intention, you know, we can't, we can't allow permits to be granted because the ZBA didn't get to its work. We're looking at an absorption that's nowhere near due based on the hundred and fifty eight identified short term rental units, including Plum Island. And I think members of the planning board have also correctly pointed out some of the new language that is in this latest version, and I've 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 combed through the latest version this afternoon when when Mr. Porter provided it to me, both this, in particular, the zoning piece, the zoning ordinance proposal. And it it seems to intend to exclude Plum Island in in certain instances of restrictions such as onsite owner operator and others and other things, parking, I believe, is accepted based on this language. But but just assuming that Plum Island and we'll call it mainland Newbury Port, the existing identified short term rentals have to come before our board, as well as our colleagues at the Licensing Commission. We're looking at a at a duplication of process, a duplication of application, a duplication of effort and endeavor and review and scrutiny that at least from our standpoint and our board, there's no way we can expect to get through more than one, you know, a meeting. And, you know, I don't need to, I don't need to work out, but you know, to to show the math, I'm sure you can do it. It's it's an onerous expectation that we feather this in as gently as possible so as to not overtax overburden or burden, or perhaps even swamp the canoe of the ZBA entirely and put us at risk of not getting to the to the forty A compliant work that we have to get to within timeline. We're looking at trying to feather in this effort, and it's going to take months and months and months. I'm I I can't expect I wouldn't expect us to have any hope of getting through everyone by June of this year. I I think June of next year is rational, and I think this, I think the City Council needs to understand. You know, respectfully, sort of the 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 tone and effort and endeavor of a board such as your board and our board, and in particular, I guess, in this instance, our board, as we try to toil through the mechanics of application, compliance, and then going through the findings and and, you know, treating everyone who comes before us with the respect they deserve, dealing with any 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 members of the public that wish to speak. And we have to expect that since this is going to be a process of first impression, that we may have neighbors and other folks that will wish to speak. And so being able to vet that properly, I would ask, you know, the courtesy of of Madam Chair, your board and your your members on the board as you offer your advice to the council that you carry in that advice embedded in your comments, some of our concerns as well as as the the your humble colleagues on the zoning board of appeals, as we try to endeavor to do this work. I think that their expectation of timeline has to be far more rational, and if they're to apply a more rational timeline, they have to, they have to think about and apply what will, what will come of those folks, you know, as they wait in queue. You know, there there won't presumably need to be or could be any enforcement until everyone's had a chance to come before the proper permit granting authority. Once they get through us, they then have to go through licensing, and I'm sure Chairman Hope, you know, would would also have probably maybe some similar concerns about absorption. The other comment I wish to make, and I certainly will be respectful to your time, but I think this is important to note, so I thank you for this opportunity. The, as I read through this ordinance, I found my concern is that this draft is still with respect to our colleagues on the on the City Council and the authors and proponents, that this isn't quite ready for prime time yet. And the reason I say that is I I found a few discrepancies that are that are unnerving and concerning, because I think they're inadvertent omissions. And I I'd like to direct the with your permission, Madam Chair, the planning board, just to one particular one that I think impacts all of us in your effort. It's on the the proposed zoning ordinance. If you could look at section VG three, which is the section that defines the short term, the the STRU. And it starts with specific districts where permitted. And I want to give members of the board an opportunity to just flip to that. I think it's page four of eleven, makes it easier. It's a it's enumerated subsection three. Thank you, Andy, for pulling that up. It says specific districts where permitted, the STRU use the meaning and definition of of short term rental units, and it goes through a listing of what is which districts are permitted, this may be permitted in by our board. So this section states that the STRU may be permitted by special permit from ZBA solely within the listed zoning districts and the PIODs not listed. So I think if you look at this, the PIOD being, you know, expressly omitted gives concern to me as I read this, a reasonable interpretation would be that the PIOD is excluded there, but not excluded to certain sections, but rather there is that the ZBA may not grant a special permit to any STRU in the PIOD. I know that hasn't been the discussion of the of the of the council, and I I think it would be a surprise to us all to find and a surprise to every short term rental unit owner on Plum Island, our, you know, our fellow Newbury porters that live out on Plum Island, their own property out there. That they that they don't have due process and access to the process. And I don't think that's what's intended, but I but I think as written, I think I I think Kobelmann and Page should take a look at this. Because, you know, if all if all STRU owners in the PIOD appear to be treated more strictly or adversely than all other STRU owners within all other zoning districts, that that smacks of a sort of a class distinction of property citizen. And that, of course, you know, leads me to this this concern of equal protection and due process, you know, having no process for redress for an entire class of property citizen of Newbury Porter can't possibly be what we're trying to do here. But I I just looked at that when I went through it carefully this afternoon, I was I was concerned because I think it is an omission, an unintended one, or perhaps just an unintended gap in the 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 precision of drafting and with, you know, the courtesy of of its drafters that 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 can happen, which is why we have this exercise. So I plan to raise that as well, you know, at the public hearing, but I I share it with you as as the sort of, you know, the point of first impression board that offers its advisory opinion. And I certainly will. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to sort of flesh this out. And I don't know if Mr. Moore, the Vice Chair Moore, has any comments, but thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the planning board, for the courtesy of of allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Rob. We do, there is a section seven near the end with an exception for Plum Island, so it does talk about all the criteria that would be used in that exception, but you're right, it's not included in the in the use table, and it's not enumerated in that or or listed in the section that you referenced, so that should be corrected. But it's not left out. It's just not in the right place identified. Let me go to other board members who have their hands up. Alden.
Yeah, hi. Just a quick comment on that. Isn't Plum Island part of R three? So isn't that isn't, is it included because it states R three?
This is Andy. I would say Rob Chanpetti, the Chair of the ZBA is a hundred percent correct in terms of the the crafting of this section would have to add PIOD in there to be very explicit and clear. The PIOD is actually an overlay of the our district on the island, so to be to be clear, I do think Rob raises a good point about the the, I do think it was unintentional in this section. To Bonnie's point, it is mentioned elsewhere that the expectation is it's allowed, but it would be very important before adoption. Otherwise, certainly attorneys would get into the arguments that Robin mentioned, which is saying that this particular section does not authorize it further, so.
Right, okay, okay. Otherwise, I was just curious. I saw the addition of that fourteen day STRU. Do they think that's going to be enforceable?
Yeah, because it's it's under it's it it's it's still regulated. In other words, there'll be a third party monitoring everything and providing data on what's happening and enforcement issues to this still unidentified, unhired person in the planning department.
So they're gonna, they're gonna know when it's the fourteenth day and the fifteenth day of that person.
Yeah, they will. Yeah, I forgot to mention, there's a whole third party monitoring with software that will keep on, keep us on track with what's happening.
Yeah, this is Andy. I could speak to that because having looked at some of those vendors before and how they do it. Bonnie's correct that the vendor, can it provide a lot of data and monitor essentially what's being advertised online at some of those online platforms and kind of consolidate those reports for us. But there there is to the mention that Bonnie made a moment ago, there is certainly a need or will be a need or an expectation of additional staffing support for the Licensing Commission, and I presume the planning board or the zoning board of appeals here. The zoning administrator, we only have one zoning administrator, one enforcement officer that is responsible for not only enforcing and making sure that people are going through the right permit process from the beginning and help helping folks at the beginning of the process to understand what's required, because we do have a voluminous ordinance to understand what the process is, but we also have the on the the tail end of that. There's a lot of processes that's going to come with that. So it it is important, I guess, to note in this whole process that we only have one person who's doing the enforcement right now. And the enforcement side of it is being focused on to a lesser degree here in terms of the the workload. There is a, you know, a certain amount of permitting that Robin mentioned earlier. But the staff side of this, a lot of time, I suspect, will, because units will not comply with this new ordinance, will will not be able to obtain a permit. There will be a lot of staff time that will be need to be devoted. If we do want to enforce these ordinances, will need to be devoted to that, and that does not get done by the vendor. The vendor can only do a certain amount of automation. It will still need to be a person, a boots on the ground person here that is enforcing those things. And to be, to be honest, some of those concerns have been raised over the years that that we've heard anyway. Things like noise or parking and disturbances are actually things that one might expect the police department to go on for on on off hours.
Right. Yeah. The other other part where I had a comment, just I again, as far as how it impacts enforcement and so forth, I think it, I think it may mean that there's still going to be several of the existing short term rental units that are will still be illegal af- if after this goes in. For example, if someone has a house and they're they're using Airbnb and renting two two different bedrooms to different people, that that would still be illegal is my is my understanding, because it's the operator is limited to only one STRU. And so that would mean one bedroom if it's not a related party, right? If it's two separate rental agreements. So that would still be illegal.
That sounds correct to me from the way you're describing it, yes.
Right.
I would also, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, also, if someone had two adjacent, owned two adjacent homes, they would only be allowed to do in the in the one that they are living in, not the one that's right next door. Even though they are close at hand, so there may be some people doing that currently.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what you mean? You have two adjacent units to your permanent rent?
Someone has, someone owns two houses. They're next to each other, adjoining property. For example.
It has to be on the same part, property adjacent on the same property. Otherwise, you're not allowed to rent it.
Right. So I'm saying there may be situations like that 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 would still be illegal, and they would have to be.
The other one would have to be a long term rental. They couldn't be a short term. You cannot rent.
Right.
You cannot do a short term rental if it's not your primary residence. Right, within it or attack or adjacent.
Yeah, that just, it just seems to me there's a lot of stuff for the enforcement side of it. It's also just to clarify that. Yeah, my 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 other concern with this with this whole thing, and I understand their desire to go slow and sort of take things a piece at a time here. But once this goes in, I I still am concerned about the the people that they're locking out of this process. And I know I mentioned it, mentioned it before, the houses that are in the conservation zoned area along along Water Street. So that's basically the addresses from two oh five Water Street up to two sixty nine Water Street. Those residential areas won't won't have the option to to do short term rentals out of out of their home. That also affects people, basically affects a lot of people all along the river, which potentially is maybe a desirable location for some of these kinds of things. Because there's also houses in the WMD district. And also in the area, well, so the area along Merrimack, the area by Cashman on the on the riverside of of Merrimack by Cashman Park and up further along. So so the, to me, it's a problem with the way the the way the zoning map is set up for the city. So I would love to see someone say, yeah, we need to revise the zoning map if you're going to penalize those folks by by this ordinance.
That's exactly what I'm thinking by, if there's enough uproar from people, I'm sorry to have to put it this way, but we haven't gotten to re re zoning districts, and it's on the agenda for the zoning rewrite. It could just push it right to the top, which would be great. There are reasons why that hasn't happened, and if people don't scream about it sometimes, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and this could help. But good to point that out, who's being left out. Is that it from you, Alden?
Actually, just one of the things that just based off a comment someone made, you know, we talked about the parking requirements for owners. Because you have to have the parking ones, one space per bedroom rented, as well as what's required for the owner. And I was just curious, I wasn't necessarily familiar with what was required for the owner. Because I know there's lots of places in the South End where houses don't have any off street parking. Or is that because they're grandfathered in and there's some current, more current requirement for parking? I'm just, again, just looking for, just to educate myself.
Those people who don't have off street parking have been, you know, grandfathered for their residential parking on the street, but that means they by definition cannot have a short term rental.
Right, yeah, that's what I was assuming, but I just wasn't aware of. So in general, now, any new any new construction, they require of off street parking?
Absolutely, yes.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah, I know I had to go back and look at that section, but thanks.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Rick.
Yes, so I was, parking was going to be my third thing, but since Alden just talked about it, it was my first. I understand what you said, Bonnie, but the at a previous meeting, one of the counselors said, I believe, that if a property was vested, was nonconforming, that meant that there was no parking required for that unit, so they would only require parking for the guest bedrooms. And I I think
Yes.
It's unclear. So so the question, you know, my question is, if you have a two bedroom house, and the owner wants to rent out one guest bedroom as a short term rental, do they require, and they don't have any parking right now, are they required to provide one guest bedroom or three, I mean, one parking space or three parking spaces? And I think the way the ordinance is written now, we can say what we think it means, but I think the way the ordinance is written now, it's very ambiguous. So I think the parking section needs to be rewritten. And then I, in that, in that situation that I described, I'm not sure that I would, you know, that that's going that isn't going way overboard to require three parking spaces for a two bedroom house. So I think we really need to look at that parking requirement more and and clarify it before we move forward on this. My my bigger issues, a mess of detail, but my bigger issues come back to the special permit, and I really don't don't understand the need to have a special permit and a licensing process. It really seems like like we're really going way overboard on this use, much more than we go on on most most other uses. So and I understand, you know, that's, it was kind of a U-turn that was made at the end of last year, and and that's where the council wants to go at this point. But I have concerns with that. If we stick with the special permit, I really don't think that the three year timeline expiration makes sense. It doesn't say that the zoning board is going to grant an extension or or renewal of the special permit. It says is de novo, brand new application. The board has to look at the the cases as if there were never a a short term rental unit there before. And it just doesn't make sense to me. I think that if if there's going to be a special permit, sure, it can be attached to the to the owner rather than than to the unit. But I think the one year renewals by the Licensing Board, Licensing Commission really are, it should be enough to protect the city and not to have another round of public hearings every three years. I can see that just getting really way overboard. So those are my my main concerns. I I mean, there's lots of details I could, you know, quibble about. But the the special permit issues and the parking issues are the ones that that cause me the most grief.
Rob, I see your hand up. Would you like to speak again?
Only very briefly, Madam Chair and, and Vice Chair Tantor, I think raises a good point and I, I just offered this. You know, we have a precedent in the way in which we, we grant special permit for an in-law use. Upon the expiration of, you know, of a two-year period, we require, you know, a re-up. And, and we don't require the, the applicant in an in-law application to, to come in de novo, but rather to provide us with verification that they continue to meet the criteria. And perhaps it makes sense to align this process with other existing, you know, mechanics that we're already familiar with. I think that's a, an excellent point because, you know, honestly, we could never, we, we could be in an endless cycle of, you know, of a three-year process. It, it would, I fear the taxation upon the board's time and, and just the restriction of the calendar and the docket that, you know, it's, it is, it's, it's, we want to make sure, I think it's important that we try to do this as efficiently and credibly as possible. And so perhaps that's a, a very valuable comment. So I just wanted to echo that.
So let me ask for clarification, Rob. Rick was saying that the three-year renewal actually wouldn't be necessary if we have, just keep the yearly licensing renewal. And you're suggesting that not only keep the yearly licensing renewal, but effectively have a check-in every three years on all the specifications for a short-term rental.
My, my apologies, Madam Chair. No, I actually want to clarify. In the, in the, in the in-law apartment use, for example, there is no extra licensing process. Here, we have the benefit of a licensing process. So I think that the, you know, the, the ticket gets printed, so to speak, by the zoning board of appeals process of a special permit. And then that ticket just gets restamped by the, the Licensing Commission. I think that's, that's an effective use of everyone's sort of time and scrutiny. So it wouldn't have to come back before us, but the idea of it going back before licensing, it's a more streamlined process. I, I think to require it to do, to go back before licensing and ZBA, it, it, I agree with, I agree with Rick. I think it's just a, it's a very taxing and perhaps onerous, no, I won't say perhaps. I think it's an onerous process. So I, you know, I should, I should call it like I see it. I, I think it might be too onerous, given what it is we're doing here. We, we, there aren't any other examples that I can think of where we are as restrictive and as intensive in process and paperwork for this sort of a use as we, as we appear to endeavor to be here.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, it's, it's interesting to me because we started out, we were concerned that there would be a lot of initial applications. And we were concerned when we heard from the public that that all their potential worries would, would be covered by the combination of the zoning and the licensing. And yet we said, let's try no special permit, in other words, by right, and see how it goes and then be open to changing it if there are significant problems. Whereas the council was convinced by certain members, some of whom aren't there anymore, by the way, that they should go the other route. They should be very, very careful who they, we issue them to and therefore wrote the requirements as they are here that we're struggling with right now. So there are two different approaches to making sure we do it right. And I think that needs to be looked at. I, I personally believe that special permit is onerous, not just because of this, I mean, it's for the applicant as well as for the administration and the zoning board. And I think there are enough controls in place through the licensing or could be and the monitoring and the enforcement to see when issues arise to take care of them. Because I guess I basically trust people even though I know I shouldn't. But we do have ways of finding out what's going on in time. So I guess I'm still looking to see if this couldn't be, we couldn't convince the council to go to by right. Bob?
Just, just a quick comment. I, I think, you know, this is an interesting discussion. The way I understand it, that the separation between special permit and, and the licensing process was separation of an initial review relative to the zoning amendments and whether a particular property qualifies. And that was the special permit process. And, you know, the licensing process was described as a kind of administrative check-the-box paperwork, you know, enforcement component of all of this that has to do with the operations side of the unit going forward. And that, that's, you know, something that needs to be rolled over year to year. I think the comment that the chair made relative to, you know, just a check-in, do you still comply with the requirements of zoning in, in the special permit environment makes, makes a lot of sense. But, you know, it obviously has been talked about a variety of different ways. But, you know, in this structure right now, there was, I believe, an intent to separate the two, so that licensing was very much about enforcement and administration post-approval of the unit and the special permit process was, do you qualify based upon the initial review of the zoning amendment?
So just to have a conversation back and forth here, so does that necessarily mean that we have to have a special permit? I mean, if we had a zoning ordinance with clear criteria in it, that the short-term rental administrator could determine that the person, you know, qualifies, then they'd go to licensing.
Yeah, and that.
Without going to the, to the ZBA to formalize it with a special permit.
And you, you know, that's, that's the way it was written, you know, six months ago, that, that this, this review and approval ran through the Licensing Board. And, and as Rick was saying, it, it, it changed late last year and, and now involves the ZBA and a special permit process. And licensing is more of an administration, administrative function. So you can, you can spin it a couple of different ways.
Okay, I see Jennifer and I see Rob again. I'd like to go to Jennifer because she hasn't spoken yet and then I'll ask Rob to speak.
Hi, I just, I wanted to speak to the point that was just raised about whether a special permit was required. Whether it's myself as zoning, current zoning administrator or an additional staff member that's hired to be the short-term rental administrator. If the ordinance is well-crafted and includes very well-thought-out criteria regarding the parking and which district sits in, an administrator should be able to take a property, look at it against the ordinance and determine whether or not it meets it. If, if all of that is done successfully in advance, the short-term, or sorry, the special permit process almost becomes irrelevant because the board would be faced with answering questions that have already been reviewed. So that is, my opinion is that if it is well-crafted, that a, an administrator within the zoning could handle it, it does leave then the licensing component to really just be that of paperwork and making sure they meet the legal criteria. But it does keep the elements of zoning within the ordinance as KP suggested should be. So I am, I am certainly in support of taking a bit more time to craft the ordinance that we have in a way that is more clear, but removing the necessity for the onerous process of the special permit in addition to the licensing. Thank you.
Great. I hope you recorded that and can play it back to the joint public hearing because the city counselors are the ones that we have to convince. Rob's hand has gone down. I don't know if his issue was already covered, but I don't see it up anymore.
Bonnie, I would just note that Mark Moore is the Vice Chair of the Board, who's also in attendance.
Would he like to speak?
He would, yeah, I think.
Oh, please, please.
Mark, did you want to address the board?
I did, I did. And thanks for the assist, Andy. And Madam Chair, thanks for the time. I'll be brief because I am sensitive to how long these go into the evening. But I, I wanted to co-sign pretty much on all the comments and what I was going to get to. I think Jennifer just hit on that. I, my concern has been, I didn't, and it seems like you've had the same concern here in this tonight, that it just seemed like a, a real big duplication of effort with requirements or boxes that needed to be checked that were exactly the same. And, and I agree that if it's crafted properly, it would certainly help my concerns with any kind of throughput capacity of getting this done in a timely fashion. Because at this, at this stage of going duplication of effort, it's just such an onerous task for the boards and the applicants that it's just going to collapse under its own weight. So I would hope that, as you said, maybe with the changes, maybe the, the new council members, they would see this, that, you know, I, it's not a scientific statistically significant sample, but I know of at least one municipality that, you know, just does this by license. There's, there's no zoning board of appeals involvement. And given the requirements and, and the new, the ability to craft something new that can be tight and easy to enforce, I am concerned. I have the same concerns that have been, that have been put out tonight. And I, I definitely agree that crafting the new zoning with the ability to, to not allow for loopholes and, and keep it simple where it can just be a simple licensing issue would be preferable. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that means our homework, not to, I'm not closing it off, but just to remind everybody to be really clear on where you think there might be loopholes, as Mark pointed out, or in unclear language, that we make that part of our feedback during the joint public hearing, because that's the place to do it. As well as then making our argument on top of that, those of us who feel strongly enough that we try to move this more to reduce the burn, burden on the zoning board of appeals and on the applicant by trying to convince the counselors that it would be safe and responsible to eliminate the special permit hearing. Jennifer, your hand's still up. Would you like to speak again? I don't think so. Other comments? This is why I wanted to have this conversation now. I think it's been really productive. And just put this on your radar and be thinking about it. Take some time looking through these, these doc, both documents. So that we're ready with very clear comments at the proposed joint public hearing for February 2nd. Jan, Andy, is that still, you think that's going to go through with the advertising and so on?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. I do think so. The council, I understand, will be receiving what they carried over from last session on Monday night. And then Tuesday morning, of course, we would follow through accordingly to get the advertisement going per my discussion with the sponsoring counselors for February 2nd.
Speaking of the sponsoring coun, counselors, Hunter is no longer there. Are they going to change that on the document?
Yes. Yeah, my understanding is Councilor Colley will stay as sponsor and Councilor Shan will co-sponsor at least to send it to committee. I, I can't speak to her position on the particulars, but I know that she will, as, as I understand it, co-sponsor for the purposes of submission for the council docket and sending to committee for review.
On both of them, zoning and licensing?
I believe so both, yeah.
Okay, good. So are we done with this topic then? Looks like it. Let's move to approval of the minutes. Andy, is it okay if we just do these all three at once?
You certainly can take a motion to approve all at once.
Okay, we're all going to add to the agenda, the minutes for December 15th because they were already submitted. So this is going to be, I need a motion and then we'll have any discussion that's required on any of them. A motion to approve minutes for 11:31, 12:121, and 12:1521.
I'll make that motion. And with the addition that, that they are approved as amended.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, and Alden, thank you. And as for the amendments?
I submitted comments on all three.
Okay, and they were minor?
All, all clarifications.
Clarification, so did I.
I submitted a, just a couple typo corrections.
Good, okay. So I'll take a vote on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes, so I was absent from the meeting on the 15th.
Okay, so.
So.
Beth will be abstaining. Okay, abstained on that one. Sorry, it kind of complicates things, but hopefully we won't have free to do in the future. Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, that takes care of the minutes. Annual election of officers, we have a slate that Alden is going to propose and we can have a discussion before I take a motion.
Right. So on, on that note, I would propose that we elect Bonnie Sontag as Chair, Rick Tantor as Vice Chair, and Beth Delisle as Secretary.
Any discussion? Anybody can have the slots if they want them. No takers. Oh darn. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the slate of officers proposed.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob.
I'll second the motion.
That's Heather. Still learning voices here. Good work. All right. Take a vote, Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you for your confidence in us. We'll try to live up to your expectations. And if we don't, you'll tell us. Other updates? Chair has no updates. Planning Director?
Just one I would note, your hearing on the 19th, as I understand, their, their primary hearing you have is the Brian hearing on State Street. So given the background and sensitivity to that facade, you may just want to, you know, refresh anything in the, in the past and that Caitlin and I can get some information on prior discussions the historic commission and others have had on that. The zoning board of appeals and we'll give you a staff report, of course, but that particular facade, you may want to, you know, take a look at it and get a, a sense of your own assessment of it going into that. Thanks.
That's a good point. Is it appropriate to pull in some of those documents, those relevant documents and list them under Brian on the website?
Yes, I can follow up with Caitlin and Diane tomorrow. We can post some of the relevant documents from, say, the, you know, for instance, the ZBA approval links to the historic commission meetings, maybe where the discussions happen. We can get some of that information conveniently posted for you.
That'd be great. Thank you. I already made a note somewhere that you just reminded me of that our decision must reference the ZBA decision because theirs referenced us if for no other reason. But that definitely has to be taken into consideration.
Has the historic commission made a recommendation on this particular design?
I, I believe they still had concerns about it. Again, I'd have to go back. I apologize for not knowing if some of it had the, the details of their more immediate comments. I believe they still had some concerns about it. But I'd have to defer and circle back with you on, on the details of that. I know that initially they, there was some concern when the ZBA was looking at this. And I think they've since looked at that, but I'd like to make sure we get the, the details out to you. And we will, of course, get that to you in writing from the chair.
So they don't need to meet now? They've already met on this design for the ZBA?
Yeah, I did that to be clear. So they, we can get you their comments. They had looked at this before as part of that process, even though it's not necessarily required here as they're coming. Even though it's not necessarily required here as they're coming to the planning board based on the way that it left the ZBA. Obviously, understandably, the ZBA members, the board as a board or as a commission and the individual members may wish to comment, you know, for your public hearing on this. But there has been a sort of presumption that the issue or the concerns that they raised on the ZBA hearing are are context for you going into what you have, which is the ZBA, just for context, for anybody who doesn't recall, the zoning board of appeals approved relief under the zoning ordinance for the downtown overlay district to allow operable windows. And left essentially that a review of that design and the appropriateness of that design to the planning board, which is the board that we're typically reviewing facade changes downtown. So they decided not essentially to, the key piece, I guess, is that they decided not as a board to grant a a variance from and decide on the design of the windows, but rather to narrowly tailor their variance to the relief required to allow an operable window, which they thought was reasonable in this context, but to leave the design detail review to the planning board.
Well, to Rick's point, then, doesn't doesn't the we have to have an advisory report from the historical commission on the design of those operable windows, which they may not have made to the zoning board. So I want to make sure we have that. And if there's, I hope there's time for them if they've reviewed it to either review it to to give us the report.
Yeah, we'll we'll follow up with Glenn Richards and the historic commission. I forget exactly where we left that off, but like I said, I think that, you know, one of the assumptions here has been that the the issue of whether to allow operable windows has already been decided, at least from the ZBA then. But to your point, yes, we will be following up with Glenn and the historic commission. I I don't know whether you'd be approving the same night you opened the hearing anyway, but in either case, we certainly want to get any feedback that they have as a commission or as individual members to you. And I certainly would expect you to hear from the preservation trust or even prior members of the historic commission to the extent they have any concerns.
Yeah, you're, it it could be really straightforward and we could close it in one night if we have the comments from the historical commission on the design. This is not a big deal.
Agreed. Agreed.
It may not be a big deal. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make that a blanket statement. It 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 could go in one night, and I would not like to see us held up because we don't have comments from the historical commission.
Agreed. I'll follow up on that personally tomorrow.
When they meet, they may meet the, I don't know how it goes, but they may have that Thursday night before our next Wednesday night. And they can flip a a report out to us in five days. So, Rick, thank you very much for bringing that up. It just it slipped my mind. Great. All right. I think we're done. Anything else? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Alden?
Second?
Second, Rick.
All right. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Thank you all. This was a very productive evening.
Good night. Thanks.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.